Social hour is over.
Don and you are going to be the...
I think that's you.
That's right.
Yes.
You're going all in.
Do we have a...
Thanks, Matt.
We don't have a... We don't have a prayer giver.
We got their hardy so desk.
I know, I know. I'm fine.
All right.
Bring the council meeting to order tonight. Welcome, everyone. First order of business is invocation. No one from EAM is here. Is there anyone from EAM here? All right, Matt, by default.
All right.
And then we'll do the pledge of allegiance after...
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to meet today and pray that you give us wisdom and guidance as we make the decisions of the evening and just watch over our great city and all of our citizens and help us to make the best decisions and move forward altogether. We also ask that you watch over all of our first responders, both here and also across the nation and the world that are helping preserve our freedoms that allow us to meet here tonight. Again, we thank you for the honor of your presence here tonight. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Let the rule show that everyone is present. Gloria?
So noted.
Mayor McFarland, we're pretty light on minutes tonight. I move approval of the council regular meeting minutes from March 19th and that we accept for the record the police personnel retirement board minutes from February 28th as they're presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes have been approved. Item D, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of claims against the city for March 14th through March 27th as presented.
Second.
They've been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, claims have been approved. Meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes from staff?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Are we going to do an executive?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so then I'll move that we change the agenda to move the reports prior to the executive session. Any other changes, adjustments? Hearing now, I'll take a motion to approve.
I shall move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the report as amended or the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so agenda has been approved. We have no special presentations tonight. Consent agenda items, all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Mayor McFarland.
What's that? G five.
Oh, G five. Okay, we'll take G five off. Now, Mayor McFarland, I move to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, since we have a G item left, G five, resolution number 5090.
Mayor McFarland, the reason I pulled that was basically I thought it was a... We've been trying to have apprentices and beginners involved with certain things and this is a program that we... EMS, emergency EMS training program agreement was updated and signed in October 2009 and renewed annually since then and the Casca Grande Fire Department, which will allow the city to include fees for the use of the apparatus for student vehicle internship and the amount of so-and-so much money, which is traded off as a free entry as a person that gets in with that amount of money, right? I mean, there's no really anything paid out, but they get the chance to go out, live calls in an ambulance and get that experience while they're in the training.
That's correct, Councilman Powell. The students get to ride on the fire apparatus and are overseen by the paramedics that are trained and are preceptors, so they allow them to do their techniques and learn in IVs, et cetera, on the job. And in return, we have an opportunity that one of our personnel could upgrade their skill from an EMT to a paramedic.
Well, I thought that's a neat program, especially since we've been talking so much about apprentices and that type of thing, so.
Good point.
I'm glad you pulled that, yeah.
Good point. Right, can I get a resolution number? Any other discussions? Can I get a resolution number, please, Gloria? Thank you, Chief.
Resolution number 5090. A resolution of the council, the city of Casca Grande, Arizona, authorizing an agreement with Central Arizona College to provide right along clinical experience for paramedic students through an EMS training program affiliation agreement and authorizing execution of the agreement.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5090 as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, item H is public comment. We don't have any public comment cards up here, but if there is anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment, please step forward, state your name and your address, please.
John McGuire, 941 East Pennyleane. Still, thankfully. First of all, I want to thank Gloria for the very short agenda tonight. Since it's my first meeting back, I'll be able to make it through the entire thing. But on a serious note, I did want to take a moment to say it's great to be back here at a meeting tonight for most people that didn't know had a pretty major heart attack on Valentine's Day, was supposed to see the mayor over at Latte Vino for dinner and didn't quite get there that night. So, but I wanted to say thank you to everybody on the council who did come visit me. Some of you I remember, some of you I don't, because I was kind of out of it for a couple of weeks there. And I also want to say thanks to the community. It's amazing, the hundreds and hundreds of people who posted on social media and wished me well and were wondering when I'm back. And tonight I posted I was back and there's already lots and lots of comments welcoming me back to my first meeting tonight and it's kind of a great feeling. I also did want to say thank you to the city services who were involved. I meant to check and see whether it was 503 or 504, whoever came to my house. I'm right on the district border, so I don't know which one did come that night. They did come visit me afterwards, but I don't remember which engine they were from. But them and AMR, everybody did a great enough job that I'm able to be standing here tonight. So it's pretty amazing considering what I went through. And Heather Smothers did a nice article on my situation and my other half, and that was very thoughtful of her as well. Finally, again, back to Angel. I know she came and spoke to you in front of you at one of the meetings while I was in the hospital and gave kind of a status update. That was her first venture into anything like this whatsoever. She kind of leaves this part of the world to me and has her own things, but I did watch the video and I think she did a great job and you guys were very supportive of her. And again, everybody who was thinking of me and even the general community, I wanted to make sure I got a thank you out to all of them for all the wishes. I'm doing pretty well. I obviously lost 30 pounds unexpectedly, but I want people to smile quite as big for a while, but overall, I'm doing well and I appreciate everything that everybody was wishing me during the time. Thank you.
Welcome back. Welcome back, John.
Happy to have you back.
Hello, everyone. My name is Patrick Hanson. Address I can be reached at is 1670 North Pinal Avenue, number 12470 here in Casca Grande, Arizona. I've been compelled to come to the city council and make a public comment on a situation that happened February 19th in the city of Casca Grande. I've been a resident of Casca Grande for at least six months. I was born and raised in Arizona. I joined the army, honorably discharged, and I came back home to raise my family here. This incident required the assistance of the Casca Grande City Police Department. I have made multiple attempts to press charges against my aggressors that attacked myself and my three children, and I have yet to get any charges pressed. I have brought this up to the city police multiple times and nothing has been done as of yet. I don't know what it's going to take to get the police officers, the law enforcement officers in the city to do their job, but I felt compelled to come here tonight and address it to the city council because I've never thought I would experience in my life being the victim of domestic violence and be charged with domestic violence. I never thought this would happen to me. And I am appalled that it would happen even after I brought witness testimony, video evidence, and multiple amounts of additional evidence to the city police officer that is responsible for this call and to the superiors and still have not had any charges pressed against my aggressors. As a resident of Casca Grande, I would expect that there would be some level of protection of the citizens in this community from the law enforcement officers we trust to uphold the law. I would recommend, I don't know and I'm unaware of any legal training that the law enforcement officers in this community have gotten. I'm aware that most police officers go through standard police academy training, but I would strongly recommend that this officer that I'm addressing, that in your investigations you'll find out who this is, that he take some basic legal courses to understand the most basic fundamental processes of aggressor to victim. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll ask the police department to kind of follow up on that and give us a report back to the council. Thank you. Sir, before you leave, can we get your name again, please, just so that I have it for the record?
The name is Patrick Hanson, H-A-N-S-E-N. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close the floor to public comments and we'll move on to item I, award of contracts. First one is I-1, approving a lease agreement between the city of Casca Grande and Grandma Jay's Candy Cottage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. City staff has worked to find the correct tenant to fill this spot downtown, and we have worked with Grandma Jay's Candy Cottage to begin a one-year lease agreement with three one-year extensions in an attempt to find the tenant to stay in that location longer term. The rent for the first year is $350 per month, and if it is extended beyond the first year, the rent will go to $600, which is the market rate for that area. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I just have one comment, and it's good candy.
It is.
If you haven't been in there. Yes, yeah.
I know, because I think we've tried a couple of businesses there and it just hasn't made it because there is traffic, but there's not traffic, and especially if you're specialized. Would you... Is there a way to trigger looking at that second year and if 600, if they're still struggling, it would be maybe less than 450 or something? Just because that first year or second year for any small business is terrible or is really hard. And I'm just thinking because there are specialty, any looking at any type of consideration, looking at that second year and seeing how they're doing in comparison to that increase.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Varela, we've had extensive talks with Grandma Jay's Candy Cottage and some of her representatives about the rent for that area. She is currently in there right now under a short-term license agreement under that same rent, same $350, and extending the next year to $350 allows her to continue at that rate. And the reason we are moving it to $600 is since it is a private business, it's not great for local government to subsidize a private business. For that reason, we're looking to try to push for the market rate.
And I assume that that moving to the 600 is fair market value for that area you've done analysis on?
Yeah, correct.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a ordinance, please. Number?
Ordinance number 3068, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casca Grande, Arizona, approving the lease agreement between the city of Casca Grande and Grandma Jay's Candy Cottage and authorizing the execution of the agreement by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3068 as presented.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, item I-2, considering ordinance accepting the sole source provider offer from Vulcan Industries.
Thank you. Staff has recommended that the mayor and city council approve a contract with Vulcan Industries in an amount not to exceed $64,447 for the purchase of two washing compactors. At the city's 12 million gallon a day wastewater treatment facility, we currently have the first part of that treatment process, which is our headworks facility. When we did the original plant expansion from six to 12 million gallons a day, the bar screens, which are two bar screens that sit in a large influent ditch and remove solid material that the plant can't handle, that would actually damage equipment. And when I talk about solids, I'm talking about things that you normally would not find in a sewer, like basketballs, tires, things that just find its way into the plant that could really cause havoc to our pump system. So these screens remove this material from the wastewater stream before it enters the plant. The next step in that process is to wash that material off so that we can take it to the landfill and landfill it. So these wash compactors then take that, compress it, wash it, and then put it into a dumpster, and we're able to take that to the landfill. We did choose to stay with the current manufacturer, Vulcan Industries. We looked at other pricing for a similar material or equipment, and because of the upsize or the... I just lost my train of thought. To install new equipment, we would have to do a lot of fabrication in the facility, whereas if we stay with the existing Vulcan brand, we're able to just basically plug and go with these new compactors. And so that's what we're going to do. We're able to install the equipment using our staff and not have to use any contractors. We did budget $90,000 for this as part of this budget year, and these funds are coming from the wastewater fund, so they can't be used for any other operation in the city other than wastewater. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just have a comment. I think it's kind of... It's a sole source that you have to deal with and the kind that you need. It seems like all the financial issues are not erroneous or elevated in any way whatsoever, and you're comfortable with that. So I think it's kind of a shoo-in.
Yeah, when I originally saw the source request from my staff, I denied it, but I didn't look at the price tag of the other alternatives. When I looked at that and looked at our budget, I didn't want to come in front of you and go, "I need more money." So this was definitely the most cost-effective way to move forward.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, Gloria, can I get a ordinance number, please?
Ordinance number 3069, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casca Grande, Arizona, accepting the sole source provider offer from Vulcan Industries, Inc. to provide two washing compactors, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $64,447.37 and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3069 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, Larry, so item L is a public meeting. We have no J and no K. Public meeting, hearing on the renewal of cable, L1. Do we want to... Do we want to go into executive session before that or... Because this is in the executive session. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't necessarily believe that executive session is warranted at this particular time. Really, as the council knows from the study session at the last meeting, we are in the process of negotiating a revision or actually an amendment to the licensing agreement with Cox Communications. We by statute must hold a public hearing in advance, the mayor and council, considering the agreement. And so I can go in more depth into what we recovered at the last meeting, or you can just open the public hearing and we can move forward from there. I mean, do you guys have any questions on that? This was... We've already had this discussion on the Cox agreement, so I'll open for a public hearing since we need to do that. And if anyone has any comments they would like to make on our agreement with the Cox Communications, Arizona LLC, then now is the time to come forward. Okay, well, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Did you have a comment? I just... Yeah, I noticed that it seems like they're putting more underground in this new contract instead of the overhanging like they've done in the alleys. Is that the case?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Powell, they are definitely, like many of the utilities today, are looking to underground when possible for a variety of reasons, but there's nothing that mandates that they put anything underground, but as construction occurs, they will certainly be considering that.
When you read it, it seemed like that was their... Basically, their preference was to be able to go underground when they can.
Okay. So we'll move on to... We inserted the N for reports here, so we'll start with reports. Donna, why don't we start with you tonight?
Okay. Just a couple of things. Tomorrow is Arizona Gives Day, and we have dozens of nonprofits in our community that are asking for support, including the Neon Sign Project. So if you're going to give, tomorrow's a great day to give. And then also tomorrow is the National Service Recognition Day, and I sit on the Governor's Commission for Volunteerism and Service Learning, and we're one of 55 cities and towns that have acknowledged that. Thank you to the mayor, McFarland. And so they'll be at Chaseville tomorrow with 1,500 tickets for volunteers from all over. So it was really nice to see our name on that when I was at the meeting last week at the Capitol, so thank you for that. And the last thing I have is several of us attended ASU Prep, their debate event, and that was really great to see that, so hats off to those folks, too. That's it.
Great. Mary?
I attended the debate as well with the mayor and with Councilwoman McBride and Lisa and all. And it was the thing that most impressive besides just... Was the idea that the whole club was started by one of the students. So the students went... One of the students went to one of the counselors and said, "Hey, this would be interesting and learning and well-to-do and good for them." They followed through, and they're doing quite well for their first year. Also, I attended with the mayor an awards event with the mayor at the Museum of Casca Grande at the Heritage Hall. The Daughters of American Revolution presented an award to Marge Jantz in recognition of that she has done to promote the colorful history of Casca Grande. And anywhere you walk in our historic downtown, you're going to see Marge's touch, such as the doors on Third Street, and now we've got the establishment of the Neon Sign Park. And so I just want to give my congratulations to Marge Jantz. And finally, we are entering a very busy time for city council and staff with the new budget year approaching. We make every effort to make information available online. There'll be public hearings and that. All of our documents, as far as I know, are always available online, and I encourage folks to get those in addition to other forms of getting that information.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Powell?
Well, I was very impressed with the debate, and I was impressed with the young people especially. They very well behaved, very appropriately dressed. They had a chance in this. You drew out of a hat and you had 10 minutes to prepare. You didn't know before you went in there what it was going to be. And I just was amazed how they could come up. They had to make a pro argument and a con argument and no rebuttal, so they had to get their deal done in 10 minutes for both of them to be ready to debate. And I was impressed, and I know we did hear a nuance about the blended education, which would be blending classrooms with computers, and that's something that looks pretty interesting in the future. The second thing I'd say, and I know none of you can believe this, but I got invited to come and tell stories at the library and Vista Grande, and it was a lot of fun. And actually, you won't believe this, but I talked for two hours and I had more left. They cut me off.
It was a stretch, huh?
It was a lot of fun. It really was.
All right, I'm going to go next, so we're just going to go right across the bench here.
We don't steal all of your...
We're switching it up. First of all, I want to say thank you, Mary. I know that I'm omnipresent and I'm everywhere, and thanks for giving me credit for being at the...
You are, yes. Debate. Debate.
Because we were in CIP meetings, but that's all right.
Yeah.
Thank you, though. And a big shout out to Marge Jantz, and Rena both for all their work, and especially Marge with her dedication to historical preservation here in the city of Casca Grande. She wears it, literally.
Yeah.
And so she is a one of a kind and a gem, really, for our city, so a big shout out to Marge. As I mentioned, we're in the middle of the budget process, and I think Mary also mentioned, but the CIP, the last capital improvement projects meeting is tomorrow. Yay. It's kind of like pulling teeth. Actually, it's not that bad, Selena, sorry. But the last one is tomorrow, and hopefully that'll kind of kick into the final budget process. We also have the homelessness workforce or task force meeting this week, so we're going to start wrapping up and establishing, solidifying the committees that we've identified. So I expect some big work out of the committee this week. We also have the... Just had the Boys and Girls Club annual golf tournament this last Saturday, which was very successful, and thanks to everybody who participated in that, all the sponsors and everything. I think we'll probably triple the amount of money we made this year that we've made over the last two years, so that's a huge, huge benefit. And we're doing the Casca Grande Elementary School rebuilding vision, which is this week as well. In fact, that's tomorrow, and then I'll let you talk about that because it's at the same time. CGPD volunteer appreciation dinner is this Friday also as well, so thanks to all of our volunteers really for everything they do. We couldn't do everything we do if we didn't have them. And then I just want to also give a shout out to the Ride for the Warrior on April 14th. They have a golf tournament at Dave White, so if you're interested in that, go to Ride for the Warrior. go to rideforthewarrior.com, and you can sign up for the golf tournament right there. And again, it's at Dave White. This Saturday, last for me, this Saturday, I'll be at the Morana Veterans Memorial, doing a special intern for veterans who have been found, basically. And it'll be a special ceremony that's down at Morana on Saturday, April 7th. So that's all I have.
You sure?
Sorry.
So Saturday, I got to go to the, I stopped by the city's Easter egg hunt, which was very well attended by a lot of people, and they had egg dyeing and stickers and bubbles and little kids finding eggs and prizes. And it was neat to see all the families, and the Easter bunny was there. I saw him, and he got it all kicked off. And it's organized very well by the community services, and they had the kids separated by age, so there was, there was still shoving, but not as bad as it could. So it was just a really neat event to see a lot of people out there in the community. And then as my tenure as Mayor Pro Tem, I got to do ribbon cutting on Friday at Arizona Aquaman on Panal, another small business locally owned. And they do everything except build the pools, basically what they have, supplies, and they clean them and everything. So that was a lot of fun. Thank you for letting me do that, Craig.
Yeah. Thanks for covering for me.
And there was free cookies, so it was even better that I didn't need, but I had one. The CIP committee you mentioned, the process this year has been different than the past ones I've been on, but it's been very good. I like it. And the departments are getting their projects to align with our new strategic plan. So that's been helping a lot to help decide which projects are going to be funded. And we're also learning a lot about development and impact fees and what we have and everything. So it's been great. And there is a golf survey available online for all the golfers and users of the golf course. So tell everyone to take that survey. I've told a few people that golf a lot about that. As mentioned, tomorrow night is the Arizona Gives Day specifically for the spaghetti western dinner at the Main Street from 5:30 to 8:00, which I know a lot of us are going to be at the school thing, but hopefully can make it over after that. And there's a lot of good sponsorship opportunities to have your name in the city annals for a long time for just a small amount of money.
Yep.
And wish me luck. On Wednesday, I'm taking the youth commission in a city van for the democracy competition.
Wish them luck.
Yeah, at the state Capitol. So I think it's going to be planned out. So a lot of them were able to get off school Wednesday and go for, this is their final competition from the Youth Leadership Day is their big project, and this is the wrap-up of that presentation to esteemed panel of judges against two other youth commissions about their projects. And they're, we're looking really good. I saw the presentation, and it's going well. And the kids have done it all themselves. So it's really going to be neat. And they get to meet with TJ Schopen as our representative, and then there's networking and tours of the Capitol. So yeah, wish the kids luck driving with me in the van. It'll be a lot of fun. And if you guys want to attend, I think I, Carl, send out the information if anyone can make it.
Ralph?
Thank you, Matt.
I also have been sitting on the CIP, and I think the important thing is the process of holding the departments accountable and aligning them and being real strict about how does it, how does it fit the strategic plan. And I think it's a good way for the future. The second thing, Congressman Tom O'Halloran had a ceremony here to honor Vietnam veterans, and there were about 60 Vietnam veterans that were here last Friday, and then provided a pin in honor of their service. And so I thought that was really special because they had veterans coming not only from Casa Grande, but Eloy and Coolidge and Maricopa. So, and I think that really speaks well because it was held here about the increase that the city is doing in terms of working and honoring our veterans. So I appreciate the staff for what you're doing. And then the third thing is, I don't know if anyone else has noticed, but I think like the tow trucks don't get the idea that there's speed limits because there's like zooming by everywhere I drive. So I was wondering if there's a way the police department might send a letter to the tow trucks and say, you know, "We do have speed limits and so forth," because I just see them zooming by, and I know it can't be in that much of a hurry.
Tow trucks?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had that same experience.
Zoom, I don't know. But anyway, maybe be able to do something.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm going to pay attention now that I'm last here. But, you know, Mary talks about the budget process, and, you know, there's been so much going on behind the scenes that's going to lead up to this and go into the budget process. You know, with the Economic Development Strategic Plan, you know, there's ideas of what we need to do. We have the city council strategic plan. The homeless coalition is putting together a strategic plan, and we're going to be going through that on Friday. We have a meeting. And then the high school district, you know, a visioning process. And, you know, so of course, all these things are so important. And like I said earlier in the meeting, the most important part is implementing. And, you know, we can go through all these processes, but the important part is to see how we're going to move forward. Because there's so much time and energy and thoughts and ideas that go into these. It's just so important to implement them, you know. And I think Donna, you said, you know, if we can find that low-hanging fruit in all of these and try to push them through, you know, early on, because those don't cost money. You know, customer service really doesn't cost a lot of money, you know, for people and advocates for the, you know, ambassadors for the city. But, you know, all these different groups are going through these processes, and of course, it's going to, you know, kind of go into how we're going to move forward into the budget and everything. So as far as ASU Prep, you know, when I went, of course, seeing these students is great, but it's just so nice to see, you know, again, the alternatives that our students have for education. And, you know, I was just really impressed with the school. You know, their leader, Sylvia Mejia, is a local person that's very talented. And, you know, she mentioned that President Crowe from Arizona State has really looked at ASU Prep as the model for this blended learning, like Councilmember Powell said. So, you know, we're really fortunate to have this school here, and it's growing. I think they said about 150 students, and next year they expect over 200. So, you know, again, if you guys haven't been out there, really go take a look. I mean, it's a great, you know, facility. And, you know, again, having that alternative for young people is really good. Of course, I'm a sun devil, so I was so excited to see all the maroon and gold, right? No devils. So, yeah, no, it was great being out there, and the students were really good. Project Connect. I know the mayor, you know, you sent that email, like, "What is this, you guys? The homeless, you know, group is putting this together?" And basically what it is, is the Chronic Homeless Task Force, not the homeless, or the task force, the coalition.
That'd be confusing.
I know. It is confusing, but we're hoping to take the Homeless Task Force and put them into the coalition as far as executing against the strategic plan. But they put together this Project Connect, and basically it's kind of like on our website, all the different resources that are available. Well, they had all those agencies come together at St. Anthony's Community Center and provide, you know, it was like an all-day event. The Casa Grande PD was there, our city judge was there, all the different social service agencies were there. And they were, you know, telling the community, "Look, these are the resources that are available." It's the first year they've ever done this, so we do need to do a little better job communicating it to the public. I mean, we had a pretty decent-sized group come through and learn about the different services. But again, it was the very first time. I'm hoping in the future we advertise it a little bit more. They did go over to the soup, the lunch program, the soup kitchen across the street, and a bunch of the people, homeless people came over and were, you know, going through all the different booths and everything. But I think it was a good start. So I thought they did a really good job. And thank you to PD and the judge for being there. And then, yeah, the volunteer dinner. I look forward to the police volunteer dinner on Friday. I always love going to that to see all the people that do so much for that department and the community. So I guess that's it for me.
All right. All right, so we have, we're going to take a break. Pardon me?
No.
Well, we've got to move into executive session.
Move into executive session.
Do that first. Okay.
Yes. So move.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded, move into executive session. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll be in executive session, but we'll give you five minutes to clear out.
Yeah.
No break, Ralph.